Uh, the order, uh, first order of business is to call the roll. Do you, would you call the roll please? Present.
Here.
Horn Hart.
Here.
Pat Bradford.
Here I am.
Stephanie Cravill.
Present.
Hugh McManus.
Here.
And Stephanie Walker.
Here.
And we want to welcome Walker back. Glad to have you back. Mind her all board members, please. Make sure you press the little button so we get green. Appreciate that. Uh, our next bit of business is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Your motion is your second. Your motion is second in discussion. If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Pass at seven zero. Let me ask Ms. Walker to lead us in our pledge allegiance today. So Ms. Walker, move please.
Are you ready? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. We will continue with the capital outlay and federal funds for ref budget. Ms. Sutton, I'm going to tag you in.
Good afternoon. Today in our work session, we're going to be reviewing draft budgets for capital outlay and for federal for next year. As of today, just for your information, DPI has not released planning allotment for state or federal, so I just wanted to give you an update on that. So as we've talked about previously, we're projecting revenue based on second month enrollment and historical information at this point until we get more up-to-date information from DPI. So we'll be covering in today's session the capital committee recommendation for capital outlay, and then we'll go over the federal revenue projections and the federal draft budgets at the end. As I've shared previously, this year's budget totals 390 million. Of that total budget, the capital outlay budget makes up about 6.2% and the federal budget makes up about 13.3%. And as we start talking about the capital outlay fund budget for next year, I wanted to provide a little bit more information about the funding sources for capital. So we do receive state funding for capital projects. We receive funding through public school building capital fund and also through repair, state repair renovation fund. And then the county, of course, appropriates capital money for us as well. So I wanted to start with just a little bit more information about lottery funding, exactly how that works and what that money is used for that's collected. The gross lottery revenue distribution. So as that revenue comes into the state, 50% of that fund, those funds are used for public prizes. No more than 15% can be used for expenses for administration of the lottery program. And adminis- and, I'm sorry, 35% of those gross revenues are for educational purposes. Yes.
Do we hold questions or? The one, the question I had about that was the, um, there seems to be a misnomer that we're allowed to use lottery funds for operational expenses.
I'm going to cover that.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Yep. And then, so I'm going to go through just some historical information about the lottery funding. And then if I don't cover whatever your question is, we'll ask that at the end because I may know more about that and I just don't go into that. So please do ask questions if you have those. The amount designated for educational purposes, and so remember that was 35% of the gross lottery revenue that's collected. 50% of the 35% is for NC pre-K. And also, um, that 50% can also be used for class size. So we actually receive, um, so the NC pre-K is a grant and we do apply for that grant and we receive that grant. Not all school districts participate in that program. And then the class size, several years ago, the state legislators started using some lottery money to help fund classroom teachers. And so some of the lottery money goes for that as well. And 10% goes towards scholarships and then 40% of that 35% is for school construction. Or if you wanted to look at it a different way, it would be 14% of the gross lottery revenue. The amount that's allotted annually through this funding is subject to change with each legislative session. But currently, there's about a hundred, $100 million is distributed. And of that amount, 98 million is actually distributed to 115 LEAs. And the other 2% is left to cover the admin related to running the program at DPI. So the capital planning group at DPI gets that other 2%. Distributions to LEAs can only be used on certain expenses. So those allowable types of capital outlay projects are defined in General Statute 115(c), 456.2b. Construction projects for public school buildings. Public school buildings is defined in this section as only facilities for individual schools that are used for instruction and related purposes and does not include central office administration, maintenance, or other facilities. So you can only use this funding for construction projects and it has to be construction projects related to facilities used for instruction and related purposes.
Does instruction include staff or is it only student facing?
So it, it could, it can't be central office administration. So school buildings, yes. It could be a building where instruction is happening or something to support instruction. But like our central office building on Carolina Beach Road 614 would not qualify. The bus garage would not qualify.
But this building might qualify because we could use it for student training?
I would say this building doesn't qualify. Would you agree, Eddie?
Okay.
So it needs to be a building that's actually instruction is going on in that building. So things that are not allowable, and we've talked about that a little bit, but some other things that you might, would think would be allowable with these funds, but is not allowable would be new or relocated modular units. So even though instruction might be happening in those units, you cannot use this funding for those. And you can't use it for equipment that is movable or not an intricate part of the building. So you couldn't purchase furniture with this funding. Before I move on and give a little bit more information about the repairs and renovation funding we receive from the state, that's also money that's collected through lottery. Are there any questions before I move on to that next funding source? Okay. And I think it was 2021, the state also started providing some additional capital funding through repairs and renovations fund. This funding is distributed annually and is normally budgeted. So we would normally receive that funding or that distribution from the state, for example, this year. And we would normally wait and budget that funding next year. And so that's what we've done in this capital budget that we're going to review in a few minutes. Funding is required, in this area is required to use for classroom facilities. So it can be used for things like expansion of classroom facilities, improvement to classroom facilities, and repairs and existing building components related to the classroom. It cannot be used for things like land acquisition. Once again, you can't use it for modular units. You can't use it to purchase computers and those type things. This year, we received, actually last year, we received $500,000 in this repairs and renovations funding source. And then, of course, we also have a county appropriation, as I talked about earlier. And now the county appropriation for capital does fluctuate from year to year. And it's based on, I believe, the funding that's available to the county and also the projects that we've submitted to the county for requesting funding. So as I had shared before, this year's capital budget is about 6.2% of our total budget. And this is significantly higher than previous years. It's normally about 1% or 2% of the total budget. And most of that is related to an additional request that we submitted last year. We submitted an additional request of about $10 million and the county funded about 60% of that, those projects. And so those are really some high need projects that they funded for us. If you would, um, could you go to the PowerPoint real quick? I'm sorry. Go to the previous page, maybe. Oh, there you go. So when you're looking at this chart, um, you'll see in 2022, that amount compared to the others where you can see the large increase this current year. And so as you're looking at that, I also wanted to provide information to you. So prior to 2022, we received capital funding, about 3.8 million. Like I said, it did fluctuate from year to year. It wasn't consistent, um, from different years. But in, starting in 2022, the county started providing additional capital funding to us specifically for safety and security. So in 2022, we received an additional 500,000 for those projects. And then in 2023 and 2024, we received an additional $1 million related to those projects. Each year, yes. And looking at this year, where we was received, or we, yes, from the county, we received that 10.1 million, but our total capital for this year is that 12 million, as you can see on the screen. It included, like I said, the $1 million for the safety and security project. But as I referenced before, the county also provided funding for some other large capital projects that we considered one-time funding. We knew that wouldn't be reoccurring capital funding at that level. And those big projects included traffic improvements at Trask and Laney, Title IX improvements at Hogard and New Hanover High School, classroom modular units at Porter's Neck, and structural repairs at New Hanover High School. So that was an additional about, I think, 6.3 million. Yes.
Good question. And I know the state funding went down significantly this year. Why was that?
And so it is, so the state funding is based on average daily membership and also the revenue that's received through the lottery funding. And so it's just down a little bit compared to the previous years.
No, I was curious. I know, I know it's probably a stupid question, but the needs, obviously the 10 million that we needed were very, very, very important needs based on maybe deterioration of things that... I mean, because we can see the funding and it goes a little by a little, but then this year was absolutely needed. Because I know we were looking at the needs and we ranked them, right? They all prioritize. I missed the capital meeting, so I apologize. I was away. Do we know if we anticipate that or more going forward in the next years that we'll ask the county for?
So if we'll, um, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide now. I appreciate your help, Eddie. So on this slide, we do actually show the repairs and renovations one-time funding. So that 5 million you see here is the other 40% of the 10 million that we requested last year that we didn't receive. And then the other categories you see there for repairs and renovations, technology, furniture, equipment, vehicles, those amounts, when you look in the county column, amount to about the 3.8 million that historically we've received. But once again, it does fluctuate, so it's not always the same amount. But that's, that's the information that is provided there. And that is the recommendation that's coming forward from the capital committee. When we met last week, this is revision based on that. If you'll go to the next slide, here we can see, um... Oh, I'm sorry. Go back. Thank you. And if you'll go to your handout, you've got a capital outlay handout. And on that front page is the summary of this slide you're looking at, at the top. The first column that you see lists by category the different projects that the capital committee is recommending. And then the next two columns, you see other projects that were submitted, but we are not recommending for funding for next year. But we will be considering those for future year fundings. And the total you see there is 40.3 million of total requests that were submitted by schools and departments. So that's the top section of that summary sheet. And then the bottom section, there's a second chart that shows you the different revenue sources that we've just talked about and how much funding would be coming from the different areas. And that would assume that the county would be funding the 8.8 million approximately. That's included here. That equals the 10.8 million in total.
That's what, that's going to be our ask, right?
That is the recommendation that came forward from the capital committee.
And remind us what we received last year?
Yeah, so I did not include in here what we received last year. The first line in that top chart that, that has the 4.9 million is the 40% that was not funded by the county last year related to that 10 million. So you're only seeing here the items that were not funded last year. You're not seeing last year's numbers. And so if you would go to page two of that handout, you can see the details here for that one-time funding or that 40% that we've been talking about. So this is the detail where you can actually see those projects that are listed. You'll notice the bottom line for Laney Artificial Turf has been zeroed out. This was a project that was originally on the list last year, but because of increases related to the New Hanover High School structural, structural repairs, we're actually deferring the artificial turf project to 2026, which you will see on another page, and using that money to help with the structural repairs at New Hanover High School. Are there any questions or any comments related to page two?
Just want to add that when we discussed, I think, the board of members officially moved the budget to the county for the safety. We bought up, and we're safe, we bought up, because I remember what's on the list. Ms. Walker?
So I just want to say out loud again. So we asked last year for, obviously, to fund 100% of what we needed. We only got 60, but this year we carried it over, the 40% we asked for last year. So it kind of moves up in the priority list. We, we submit this and then they decide what, what they give us.
Right. And then if we don't receive all the funding that we're asking for, then of course, we would need to come back, we would have to adjust this list and come back with a revised list. And then on page three, here you can see what I would consider our normal capital request. So this is, um, not related to the $10 million additional request that was made last year. And so, um, page three has those projects listed, that total 3.4 million. And, um, you will notice that that is for next year. And pages four through eight show the other projects that were submitted related to repairs and renovations that we're not recommending for funding for next year. But once again, those would be considered for future budget recommendations. On page, I'm sorry.
Would you speak to the need for the intercoms?
Yes, I'll, I'll actually let, um, Dawn, if she doesn't mind, speak to that.
Yes, we have several intercoms that are old and in need of repair. They're no longer supported as far as our equipment. We have to find basically used parts to kind of keep them going. So we are working on a replacement cycle so that we can get it in place. But we've got a lot that are needed like right now. So that's why the request for some additional ones were there. And we have had funding through the safety grant for one and some other funding came through this year for us to replace additional ones.
Walker?
This is kind of related, but can, can someone explain the ranking, how they're ranked? Because I see Laney turf on here since 2022, but it's not, that's been removed. So what, what decides what's a one and what's a two and three, et cetera?
So Eddie, I think she's referring to Laney on the top of page four.
Yeah, well, I'm asking the broader question of the ranking because it's got a number one, but it's obviously been a number one since '22.
So on page two, consider those items separate from our normal capital process. Last year, we had identified several high priority projects and at, at the request of the county, and we submitted those. And they said, could you get them all done in one fiscal year? And we said, no. So we broke it up into 60 and 40. And a lot of the funding that we received this year, some of those fully funded the projects from design through construction. We're in the process of finishing up design and bidding those projects at this time. Construction will take place this summer on most of those. Other projects that were funded last year were for design only. The culinary arts classroom at New Hanover and the Laney Artificial Turf are two examples of that. We received funding for design and testing last year. We have, we are finishing that phase of the project at this time and we're requesting the construction funding. In terms of priority, because those were kind of a special request that was funded, we just listed them all as priority one. They're not necessarily ranked in order. And then the year requested, some of these were newer projects and some of these may have been on our capital list from previous years. So I know artificial turf has been on our capital list for a couple of years now. So that's probably the first time it had shown up on our capital list as opposed to the structural repairs that was requested and funded in 2023.
Okay, I guess, I guess that kind of explained it. But, I mean, there are obviously things like security alarm upgrades. They have a two. Like some things are for safety.
Which page are you on now?
I'm sorry, I, I went to four. I'm just looking at the ranking system, that's all. Because I'm, I guess my question is if, if say HVAC, that's going to be a high, high priority anytime, right? There's some things that emerge that are higher as far as emergency needs. Roof recover.
So let, let me explain the cap, the, the normal capital outlay process. Every school and every department has the opportunities to submit requests. They come into facility planning and construction. Facility planning and construction, along with myself, will look at those requests and we put them into one of three columns. And those columns are titled imperative, essential, and important. The imperative column, we then take every item from that imperative column, put it on a separate spreadsheet, and then we begin prioritizing those. And where you see the priorities one, two, three, that is our guess at the time of what year they would be funded in. So the priorities one, we're requesting funding for this coming fiscal year. Priority two would be the second year. Priority three would be the third year. Now, each year, we, things change. Sometimes we, we have savings, we're able to do some items on the list that were not initially funded. Sometimes it's the other way around and we end up bidding a project and it comes in over budget. Or we have an emergency that we need to address and things get deferred. So, you know, things do change just because it's listed in year two. You know, that, that list doesn't automatically come up without us looking at those items and identifying what the changes are. We, we do evaluate that.
Sometimes probably more than yearly, right? Like, like we had a roof leak, that, that has to be done quickly.
Well, we do have a lot of the, like a roof leak would be addressed in our operating budget. We do have a service contract through our operating budget where if there's a roof leak, we can send a contractor out to make those repairs. Now, based on what they find, you know, they're going to fix the leak, but they may say, hey, this is, I fixed the leak, but you need to replace this roof because it's in really bad shape. So that, that may add a project to the list or it may move it up in priority. But it, but the leak itself would be addressed through our operating budget.
Thank you. My question was, and I, I think this might be what Ms. Walker was getting at, is on page four, a number one priority is the artificial turf to the tune of 1.5 million. But then there's two number two priorities. One for security alarm upgrades and add mobile, and I don't know if you were addressing that, Ms. Walker, but the access controls, to adding together would be roughly $250,000. So why are those not a priority one in compared to the Laney turf?
Can you give me that page number again?
Sure. If you look at page four, the very top line is the artificial turf at Laney at a priority one. And the first two number twos that you see are security alarm upgrades and add mobile unit access controls. And if you add those two together, it's only $250,000. Priority than artificial turf at Laney. So I, I don't know if she was getting at that specific one, but I had looked at that on this sheet to just ask about as well.
So the artificial turf project on page four at the top, um, that is, that is the same project that shows up on page one. So it, it's just left over from, you know, 2022 on this list. It's not... Well, there's a line at the end of page three. You see the highlighted line that says subtotal for fiscal year 2024?
So that would be the request for next year.
So anything below that line is not being funded this year. And the committee discussed exactly what you were saying, that there are some higher priority needs, um, safety needs that, that the committee voted to defer the Laney turf so that we could go address, go further down the list and address those critical safety items.
So kind of along those same lines then, Eddie, the, um, the, below the line, we have the fascia replacements at Bellamy and the roof recover at Forest Hills. They are rated at number one. And given the fact that we've had some similar kind of things happening at New Hanover, are those not, and Forest Hills is, is a much older building too. Wouldn't they merit moving up into the let's ask for it number ones instead of the let's not ask for it number ones?
So these are ranked in priority order and we did not feel that those were, those could make it another year and would not be a higher priority than what's on the list for fiscal year 2025.
Okay, and I'm assuming that's the same with the hot water heaters in the kitchens at several of our schools that are down at number three?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
It's, I'll say it's a difficult process. There's nothing on this list that's not needed.
Yeah.
But you have to, we have to make some very difficult decisions in prioritizing to match the needs with available revenue.
Okay, we've got a subtotal on the bottom of page three of 3.35 million. We have another subtotal on the bottom of page four, 5.5 to 6 million. So we're working off the 5.5 number?
No.
Working off the three?
Yeah, so on page three, that total, if you look at the description of the subtotal is for next fiscal year, fiscal year 2025. And page four, where that line is, is.
Oh, this is 26, I got it.
Yeah.
So tell me one more time, what, not what we asked for, but what we didn't see was our total number for last year?
Yep. Yes, so if, Anita, would you mind, I'm sorry, going back to the summary page for capital? And go back one more, I think. Right here. So here you can see the funding, so we're in fiscal year 2024. So the total capital budget for this year was new money, was 12 million, as you see here in the total column. And 10.2 million was from the county and then the 1.9 was state revenue.
And that's what we received?
That's what we received.
Thank you.
And then the difference, when you're looking, as you can see, there's been a slow increase when you look from year to year. And so as we talked about before, the state column is, that's just based on lottery distributions we receive from the state, you know? But the county numbers there really depend on the funding that's available to the county and the projects that we submit, which items that they're able to fund. And so you see increases going from 2022 to 2023 because they were able to fund some more projects. They, in 2022, remember, they funded safety and security projects at 600,000, where in 2023, they actually funded a million of the safety and security projects. So that amounts for a lot of that increase that you see there.
And this is just a state lottery question. So when we haven't asked to them, what do they look at? Do they look at the wealth of our county? Like what do they look at to decide what they give us?
Yeah, they look at our school enrollment, our student enrollment, and then of course the revenue that's been collected through lottery.
So it is, it is enrollment related?
It is. Does that answer those questions? Related to projections, I want to say it was 341 students, actual compared to projections. I don't have that in front of me, but I think that's pretty close. Yeah, I don't, I don't have that in front of me. 34, 34.
Something like 60 odd percent. When we look at our total budget, I think the county came in at about 28% and then.
Yeah, I think that's about right. Yeah, 26 to 28% of the budget.
That's a million 17 if it's 341 students, just on the local.
I'm sorry, say that again?
If it's 341 last shrinkage of students on the 34, 34. My little Mickey Mouse says that's 1.17 million.
Yep, that sounds about right.
But I'm just, I'm just, maybe I'm being really, really slow today, but we're going to ask if this were to pass, if the board were to vote, but we're hoping to ask for, at the county level, for 25, 8.775. Am I reading that right? And, but over here, we've got 3.51. So where's the difference in those two? Page three is 3.351. Where's that roughly $5 million? Is that coming from the state? Is that what I'm missing?
So if you look at page one, that shows the summary for the capital outlay, the top chart will show you, if we're just talking about repairs and renovations now. Remember, the top line is what I'm calling the one-time funding that's related to that 10 million approximately. You see the 4.9. And then the next row, repairs and renovations, you see the 3.3, 3.3 million. That number ties to page three.
Did you say that's on page one?
Yeah, so on, yeah, so on page one, in that first column for 2024, 2025 funding or projects, you see the 4.9 or right at 5 million. That number ties to page two, which is the one-time projects where you can see the detail. And then if you look at page three, that shows the detail for the repairs and renovations, which is part of the normal capital process. That total, the subtotal fiscal year 2025, 3.3 million, right at 3.4 million, if you wanted to round that up, that ties back to page one, that second row. And so that gives you a total of the 8.3 million, the subtotal repairs and renovations on page one. And we're going to fund that, if you look at the chart, second chart on page one, and if you were to add the 4.9 you see on the far right for totals, where it shows the different funding sources, if you add the one-time repair renovations to the repairs and renovations, the second row, those two are going to equal the 8.3 you see at the top. So the top is telling us the projects we're going to fund and the bottom chart is showing the revenue sources for the, to fund those projects. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are there any other questions related to the repairs and renovation projects? And so if you flip over to page nine, you'll be able to see the detail for the capital pro, I'm sorry, the technology projects that we have listed. And so once again, that total is going to match back up to the summary sheet on page one for technology. And so the total that we're recommending, or I'm sorry, the capital committee is recommending for fiscal year 2025 is the 1.8 million you see there for the subtotal. And there's three projects included in that funding. Are there any questions about those projects? We'll be glad to answer those questions.
The technology one, what does that entail, the funding for?
So are you talking about the priority one or the rank one?
I'm looking at page one where it says.
Okay.
Well, that's just the summary sheet, right?
Yeah, that's the summary sheet.
It says technology one, 1.838603.
Yeah, if you go to page nine, you'll be able to see the detail for those projects.
Thank you.
Can you point out, one of, one of the projects Mr. Lance had said had a 10-year warranty once replaced, which is, which is that one?
That's the security camera one.
Okay.
So are these technology projects that we're looking at here on this list different from the federal funding ones that we're going to be looking at in a little bit?
Yes.
For technology? Okay.
Yeah.
And is there a reason that we put some in federal and some in ask for local, other than the fact that that's what we're allowed to do?
I think the federal projects you're talking about, and we would need, I would, we can look at that in more detail when we get to the federal budget. I think you're referring to the projects funded with ESER money. And so that, those funds are going away, but that was just funding that we received through ESER where we were able to do some extra technology projects.
Okay, because the one I was looking at was where it says Title IV, Student Support and Academic Enrichment. When I looked up that program code, one of the things says improve use of technology to improve academic achievement, digital literacy for all students. So that's what I guess I was confused on.
Okay. If you don't mind, if we can look at that when we get there? And that way I can pull up the detail and maybe I can give a little bit better.
I can talk about E-Rate now.
Okay, that'd be great.
So basically, it's a, it's a federal process. If you, on your cell phone bills, you'll see there's a little FCC charge. So everybody pays a little charge every month that goes into E-Rate. So schools and libraries are able to request funds based on projects. Their goal for E-Rate is to provide internet connectivity in schools and libraries. So we, the state funds our internet through there, the state, state files for that. And then we file for the WAN connections at the schools. So we get a discount from E-Rate, like an 80% discount. And the state actually picks up the other 20%, so it doesn't cost us anything for the WAN. And then category two is equipment. And last month of the month before, you guys approved a $400,000 thing at the board meeting, which is the part that actually the state's paying, but it would be our part for the network equipment. So we're getting a lot of network equipment replaced at no cost to New Hanover County schools. So, but there is a process, there's a process, you put an application out or a 470 out, which is a bid. All the responses come in, then you do a 471, which basically is saying, this is who we want and this is what we want to purchase. And then we wait for USAC to review those, approve them or deny them. And then usually we get the funding the beginning of the following year. So it's a year-out process.
And so on page 10 through 12, you'll see more technology projects that were not recommended by the committee for funding for next year. And if you have no questions on those, then we will continue on. But if you do, I want to give you a moment.
Thank you very much. I have one more question. So the page 10.
Yes.
That has got a number one priority ranked. The very top line, it says continue one-to-one round four for Holly Shelter and Murray. We're not asking for funding for that. Are we not going to continue one-to-one to these schools until next year?
That's for the new line boards. They are one-to-one with laptops. Every middle school is one-to-one with laptops. This is the actual new line boards that, similar to what's hanging in the room behind us when you guys have your class sessions. They are, those are the only two middle schools who don't have them. But there are, you know, they are one-to-one and we do have, all of our high schools have them and some of our elementary schools have them already. We just had a seven-year plan to, in a rotation plan, to get them at every school.
Yeah, I'm looking on page 10 where we're talking about the replacement of the Identikit with the Ricotta. The, is that a, you know, that's obviously a safety situation also. Is that, are all of our Identikit ones working at our schools that we can, we can hold off on that?
Yes, they are working. It's a, it's a yearly fee we pay them. We were just looking at going to a different system because it offers other options and, but it's not something that we have to do, which is why it wasn't a top priority. But the system that we currently have, Identikit, works just fine.
Except sometimes we can't get our picture taken, but that's okay. You can't read, you can't see it anyway. We all look like a smudge, an ink blot. No, I step on tiptoes.
Okay, if there are no other technology project questions, then we will move on to page 13. On page 13, you're able to see the recommendation for furniture and equipment. And so as you can see on this sheet, the subtotal for fiscal year 2025 is 210,000. So that will be the request from the committee for next year. And then the other items you see listed there would just be for consideration for future budget years. Any questions about furniture and equipment? On page 14, we have a recommendation for vehicles. As you may recall, we did not have vehicles included in the budget recommendation for last year because we were having trouble actually getting the vehicles in. And so that's not an issue anymore. The vehicles are coming in, there's not that lag time. So here you see vehicle request of 414,450. And then the other vehicles listed would be for future budget consideration. Any questions about vehicles? Does the board have any discussion about capital? Is this the recommend, so I guess what I would like, or I guess to share with the board, is this recommendation, if there's no changes from the board based on what came from the capital committee, then this same document would go to the full board to actually be voted on at, for the county request. Yes. Yes, so if you would go to page one of that capital outlay budget summary, I think this gives you the summarized picture, if you don't need that detail for the different projects. So the actual county request for capital, if there are no changes from the board, would be the 10,789,653 that you see in the first column. And let me go back. That would be the total capital outlay request. The, if you go to the second chart, the state would provide funding for approximately $2 million of that request. And the actual county request for capital outlay appropriation for next year would be the 8,775,600. And so that's how, and if, so if you add those three funding sources together, you come up with the 10.8 million. So any feedback from the group, any changes or discussion?
The, with the ESER funds, we did the high schools and the middle schools. We used the devices that we had in the high schools and middle schools and pushed those down to elementary. And we are in the process now of cleaning those, wiping those, and getting them out to schools. We should be like 99.9% close at elementary being one-to-one as well. It's, it's four years, they have a four-year warranty, but we have gotten many more years out than four out of our devices in the past. So the high schools went out, the first high schools were New Hanover and Laney, and they went out two, let's see, this would be middle school, two years ago. So we're still within that, you know, that initial four years. Correct.
Well, we still have to submit applications and it still has to be approved, but we have the money sitting in an account for us. And as soon as the state approves the projects, then we would have. And the county also has to approve lottery applications, projects. And so once it's approved by everyone, then we would be able to draw the funds down. Yep. That's correct. Yep, that's correct.
I was going to say, Ms. Walker, if you look on page two in the facility needs assessment, what was explained at the capital meeting, that $500,000, what you were talking about
what was explained at the capital meeting, that $500,000, what you were talking about cycling through things, that is part of the assessment that's going to be happening so that we, so we're not just coming up on all of our HVACs need to be repaired at the same time and technology, whatever. And so that was the justification for that, which I felt good about because right now I feel like we're kind of juggling different things. And so it was nice to hear that there's a plan in place, just like you're talking about, to cycle things through.
Okay. So if we're done with capital, so that will be the information that's carried to board meeting when we talk about the county requests. Next, I wanted to go through federal funding. And so just to give you a little bit of information about federal, as you will see a list that I provided through the PowerPoint, and the, this is not a complete list of all of our federal funding. However, these are programs that we receive pretty consistent funding, and these pass through DPI, so we feel like we can project the revenue for these programs. Any other grant, federal grants that we receive would be based on specific student needs or district needs, and we would complete applications for those, and the revenue just varies so much in those programs. We'll wait until we actually know the funding that's available before we build a budget for those. On this list, I did want to point out, you do see the third bullet, Title I, you see the Program 115. I have it listed here because we would normally say that that's some consistent funding that we would budget for, but keep in mind, that's a grant that's ending, it ends June 30th. That's the Targeted Support and Improvement Grant, or some people refer to it as the TSI. So I just wanted you to know, when you're going through the federal budget document, you'll see that program, but it'll have zeros for next year because that funding is ending.
Would you tell me where to find that one again, the CSI?
That's, it's Program 15. So if you go to the federal budget document that was distributed, it's on page seven. And so you can see the total funding that was received this year for that program, and then you'll see for next year, there's no funding, no budget entered for that.
Is that the title where it says ESEA, that one? Number 130 dot 115?
It's the only one that doesn't have any 25. Has to be it.
Sorry, I'm just a second.
Okay, okay.
Yes, it's on page seven, and it would be.
The third, third one down.
The Title One, Targeted Support and Improvement, yes. Sorry about, took me a while to get back.
So that's the federal funding we will not receive money for, right there?
That's one of the programs.
And I, oh, I'm sorry, is there a question?
Yeah, I see in the federal funding that they, some of these sections have teacher positions, and I know we talked about that last time. There are 279 kind of proposed, and then 71 for ESER, which is technically federal, too. How many, do we know how many position losses we have that are not ESER but are federally funded?
So I don't have that number with me, but I can definitely provide that. What I would like to do is to give you a little bit more information about just an overview of federal, and then let, and then let's go through that federal handout, and then try to ask questions, and I'll try to answer, so that's my ability. Whatever I can't answer, we'll make notes, and then I'll get those answers back over to you. For the ESER funding, I wanted to make sure that we talked about, you know, during, during the pandemic, after the pandemic, we received a lot of federal funding that was ESER or GEAR funding, and that funding, we had access to those funds for about two years, we would receive it, and then it would carry over. They lasted about, I think it was 27 months, most of those. And as you can see, those grants have ended, and ESER III is the one, the big grant that's left, and that's going to be ending September of 2024. However, we do plan to have all of those funds spent, except for there are some HVAC projects that we're not anticipating those to be complete until the summer, but we are confident that we'll have those projects completed, invoices paid before that grant If you look at historical information related to the federal funding, I think this just gives you some good history, historical perspective related to the federal funding. And so this is in the PowerPoint, and so I thought we'll go through the slide deck, and then we'll skip back, and then we'll go back to the handout for federal funding, if that helps you. So on this chart, you can see going back to 2022, but actually, if we go back to fiscal year 2019, which is not shown on this chart, but I think it's important to talk about that year because that's the year before we started receiving the federal, the extra federal funding related to the pandemic. So that year, our federal funding was about $3 million.
Total?
Total. And let me go back, that doesn't exclude carryover, so there might have been some carryover from the previous year that came into fiscal year 2019, but the new federal funding for that year was about 13 million. So that is our pre-pandemic number for federal funding.
13.
13.
13, okay.
13, around 13 million. So as you can see, since 2022, our available federal funds, in that year on the chart, you can see it was 115 million. And for each year, you've seen a decrease because eat, with each year, those, one of those federal grants is ending. And so in 2023, you see a decrease in federal funding of 27%. In 2024, that decrease is about 39%. And then going into next year, we're looking at about a 74% decrease when you're comparing to the previous year.
And that's because all the ESER money has run out?
And that's because the ESER money is running out.
Has expired, okay.
Right. So that first year, the 2022, that was the year that we probably had the most because we had the carryover from the previous year, and we had, we were receiving a large allotments through ESER, and then each year after that, you see a reduction as those programs or those grants are ending.
Ashley, so it's safe to say the fourth column over ESER and whatever D E E R with carryover stands for?
GEAR.
Is that 94,308,000? Is that basically what our ESER money was for that year?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, that would have been the current year, any current year grants we receive plus carryover from the previous year.
And we would have had carryover just because it hadn't all been spent?
Right.
It wasn't, it wasn't ESER?
Right, right. Well, it would be ESER money, but it wasn't fully spent because we had 27 months for most of those programs to spend the money. So you would have carryover going into the next two years.
Sure. Ms. Farnhardt, and just a quick reminder to all board members, please put your mics on so that you can be heard. Thank you. Farnhardt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Sutton, I know a lot of the funding with ESER relief was for targeted intervention. Do we have an analysis of the different interventions that we did so that we can see as a board if it's something that we want to continue to advocate for, either on the state level or federal level, and the effectiveness of those? I know some of the things we did were summer school and different things like that, but I think that would be a value add for us to kind of look over and see the effectiveness of the programs that we were able to run with this funding, and if there was any that we would like to see continue. Obviously, the funding's not there right now, but.
Right.
I'd like to see that analysis. I don't expect you to have it right now, but I'd like to see that.
So the ESER reduction that's shown here for next year, about $10 million of that, and I won't say about, it's pretty close to the 10 million, is related to the salaries and benefits. So the number of the decrease is a lot larger than the 10 million because we were doing, we were buying curriculum, we were doing summer school, we were doing other things with the ESER money, but of that decrease, 10 million is related to salaries and benefits. We had hoped that our student enrollment numbers would increase, which would allow us to, had increased state revenue, which we were hoping we could shift some of those salaries and benefits over to state. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. Our student numbers did not increase, so we weren't able to do the shift we were hoping we would be able to do. In 2024 and '25, so next fiscal year, not considering ESER, just looking at all of our other federal grants that we receive, we are actually projecting a decrease between 10 and 15% depending on the program. As I had talked about before, we currently do not have federal planning numbers from DPI, and so we are using that 10 to 15% reduction is based on guidance from DPI, but we don't actually have planning allotments from them yet. So we're just trying to be conservative and make sure we don't estimate revenue higher than what we're going to actually receive.
Mr. Ober. So am I correct in understanding that our federal dollars are also ADM-related?
Yes. So federal money is based on student enrollment, and it's targeted for specific students normally.
Specific, specific students?
Specific student populations.
Populations, okay.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if you can answer this, or maybe we can get the answer to it. I know we had a discussion probably a few months now about our disproportionality issue when we were not receiving funding, I think from the government. Do you all remember that? IDEA, I think it was through IDEA. Are they withholding that until things change, or are they saving it for us, or are we just never going to get that money back?
So we've received the money, but we have to spend it on disproportionality, so strategies to eliminate that. So we are getting, we are receiving the funding, we, they're just telling us that we have to spend it in that particular area. Eliminate some of the flexibility that we would have if we weren't in that status.
Do we, do we know what we've been doing for that? I mean, I guess we just haven't had a broader discussion. We've kind of talked about it, but we didn't, maybe that's for another work session or another agenda item?
And so now, if you want to go to the handout, that's the draft federal budget. And I know you guys had some questions about specific programs. So on this document, I tried to include the program description to help us, so you would have a better idea of what that program was for. And as I had shared before, for example, on page one, the first column is the current year budget, and then you have a change in the middle, and then the column to the right is the budget that, the draft budget for next year. So this has not been finalized, this is just a draft at this point. And so I know, Ms. Craybill, you had a question, so I don't know if anyone else had questions about a particular program, but I can try to answer that now.
Yeah, I was just, when I was, when I was looking at the page where it said annual funds grants through DPI, I was just trying to make sure that I understood what each of those bullets covered.
Okay.
And everything was pretty clear to me as I, as I looked into it, you know, the, at first Title VI, you know, part, I was looking at part A and was talking about tribal money, and I'm like, well, we don't get any of that. But then I looked at part B and, you know, had the handicap stuff in there.
Right.
So the one that I had, the question about, was the Title IV, where it talks about the SSAE, you know, part, you know, the subpart one, the, where it said we needed money for better well-rounded, we were supposed to spend it for better well-rounded education, improve school conditions for student learning, improve use of technology to improve academic achievement and digital literacy for all students. And it also included pre-Ks. So I was just wondering, you know, how do we spend, how do we spend that money?
Joyce, can you, can you answer that question, or shall we come back? Do you answer that? Okay. Because I don't think Julie's not here today to be able to answer. Do you, Patrice, do you have an answer to that question? Okay. So Joyce is going to look that up for us, and then she'll, she can provide some information, and then we could still bring additional information back to you.
And then the other, the other one was that the Title III was the Language Acquisition Program, and so I just wanted to know what kind, I mean, I know what multi, you know, language learners are, but what were some of the kinds of programs that we spent that money on, so that, you know, everyone's clear that we are, we're meeting the needs of our multi-language learning students.
Patrice, do you want to answer the, about the different programs for ML students?
Majority of the money that you're speaking of, and you might can jump in, Dr. Barnes, is for our staff, for ML?
Mm-hmm.
And Michael, is that, that's where we're going with that, where you provide us with some, we supplement that?
We've got some professional, I'm sorry, Chris. Professional development.
Yeah, there's a small amount of professional development, but we were able to fund about 38 ML teachers specifically, but the bulk of those come out of a share between the state EL funding and this.
Okay, because when I looked that one up, I was reading that the three components were, that we identify our student learners for data collection and reporting on that. The other one was the, making sure we have a quality program for those students, and then we have program compliance. So I wasn't, I didn't get into it that deep, you know, to read about what program compliance was, but, so I was just curious, as like on a way-up-year level, you know, what that meant. The, and it did talk about in program quality, making sure we have teachers that are qualified to teach multi-language learners so that they get a quality education too. So is that what you were just referring to?
We require all of our teachers who are teaching ML to be certified in that licensure area.
Okay. And is there any licensure requirement for, let's just say that we have some students in our, in my classroom that were multi-language learners, and I wasn't a multi-language learning teacher because the majority of my class were not multi-language learners. Does that make sense? Like, my class could have one student that is a multi-language learner. Do I have to be a multi-language learner teacher in order to teach that child to meet these requirements?
No, our ML teachers are designed to provide specialized support to those students. They are also spend the bulk of their day in regular.
In regular classes.
In inclusional classes as well.
Yeah, just gen, yeah. Okay. Okay, yeah, I was, gave myself a crash course on titles.
So Ashley, on page 11, under the change column, that negative $40 million, that's how much less ESER money we have going into this next year than we have had this last year.
So it's not all ESER, it would be all the federal programs that are listed in this document, but majority of that would be ESER.
Because when I did the historical and did the math, I came up with 38 million, so it's off a couple million dollars, but it's, it's the federal. Okay, so 34,690. So just 35 million less in ESER funding. So all of those programs that have no dollars, those are the ones that just weren't continued.
Right.
Thank you.
I feel like I have to ask two questions. I think Craybill meant to come back and ask, because I think she did ask originally, if we could find out how many employees were employed by ESER funds, that's A. And B, and I think I've said this before, I want to say it again, obviously, the biggest situation as we discussed and haven't arrived at positions yet of any kind or shape, is cutting staff. My question is, we keep. My question is, we keep hearing understandably that our reduction in student attendance every year. And I've asked this before, and I just feel like it needs to be addressed more seriously. When a student does not come back to our school, the odds are they're going to another. I assume most people will agree with that. So they have to call for records, transfer. We need some type of system to keep up with where the kids are going, so we can answer the question. If they're going because of a problem in the school, maybe that's something we can address. Because every year, we keep talking about the loss of students. And I can't imagine, except for seniors, but even then, if they go to KFIR and/or a college, they have to request some records mailed, and that could be kept up through that procedure.
So you're asking for like an exit question? Why'd you leave us? Or where'd you go?
Yes, where they went, yes. And try to, I really think it'd be worth it. Absolutely.
I do too.
Anyhow, thank you.
Do we have any, I don't know where if we have anything like that.
Isn't some of that, we don't even know where they go? Like, we try and track them down, but we don't know.
And I'm reaching back a little bit into my principal days, but Power School is the vehicle by which you track students. So you can run Power School reports and find out how many students transferred, whether it was in-state, out-of-state. So you find those things out. Power School will do that for you.
Am I correct that all of the Power Schools don't get their records, even if they go to homeschool or some sort?
Yeah. Because of, you know, dropout things and graduation things, we have to track all of our students, so we end up knowing where they go, or have to find out where they go.
And we also mail a check to those kids who go to charter. Tell them who gets the charter check.
I don't think we say it to the kids, but I'll let you answer that one.
So could we have that?
We also discussed that the leaving class is not the same as the incoming class. That was another reason. They're not all going to charter schools or private schools or homeschools. Some just don't have as many students. That was the other thing we discussed earlier.
So, Dr. Barnes, we could ask you to run that Power School report and tell us, say for the last year, where they went?
Yes. Yes, we can get that.
That would be lovely.
That would be good to know.
That would.
Marhart?
If you said, do you agree or not?
Ms. Sutton, I'm looking at the page that you gave us, and this was the worst-case scenario, looking at the budget cuts, and looking at the ones that clearly say ESER, and that adds up to 70.5 positions. But through conversation, I believe that I recalled that we also funded ECTAs with ESER funding.
Right.
Is that like an ESER II classification? Can we get that total between all of the ESER funding classifications, what that total is? Because on my sheet, it shows 70.5, but having that conversation, I know, I don't know how many, but I know some of our special needs TAs were funded through ESER.
Yep. So what happened with the special need TAs is when the state and federal revenue came in short, we first moved them to local, and we started building budget documents, and we ran out of local money, and so we ended up moving more of those over to ESER. So it's a combination of ESER versus not. So yes, we can definitely get that number to you that shows the total positions that are currently funded in ESER, because those will be going away, so you would have an updated list. So we'll separate it, ESER versus non-ESER, and have two lists with subtitles and grand totals.
So I, I understand that we hired staff with ESER funds and that we knew would go away, but I guess my question is, the need is still there. If we had to move them out of local into ESER and back or whatever, I mean, the need is still there. So I just, doesn't it make sense to reduce staff if the need is still there?
We just don't have a way to pay them.
The money, that's right. I just wanted to just point that out, that's all I'm saying. It doesn't mean we don't need the positions.
Right, right. I think we all agree that the need's there, we just don't have the funding to be able to pay them.
Ms. Bratt?
If I could add to that, would you break down the positions, ESER, et cetera, what department they're in, or what area?
Yes, and Ms. Bratt asked for that too. Yep?
That's what I wanted to.
Do, when we moved positions from ESER to local, back to ESER, do those people know that?
So we have local ones, and you may be 50% of this one, 10%, 5%. So, but if you are fully funded, the positions of persons like personal safety, they were all funded through.
Straight ESER, and so they knew upfront?
The persons who were hired, so they hired 50% of the person.
Right.
Yeah. So what, yes, so those individuals know we would make, so to be there, we'd have certain things.
And then, and the employee, the employee probably doesn't care if they're like state, local combo, but they would care if they were state, local, ESER combo, because that means part of their position, 0.5 of them, it might be going away. You know, so how do you have, you know, 0.5 going of yourself?
And so what happens in those, in those, sometimes we were hiring for behavioral, protein, local, and all of that is identified to ESER, so they have to go back and get the script of the positions.
Okay.
I want to, Ms. Marhart, but I do want to stop for a second. Do you have anything else, because we've kind of gotten off the capital right now. Do you have anything else in capital you need to discuss before we get back to?
I do not.
I thought we already, we ended capital.
I just want to make sure that you didn't have anything else to talk about. All right, Ms. Marhart?
Well, and I guess along the same vein of what Ms. Crable was saying, did our employees sign something that acknowledged that they weren't ESER employee, that they knew their position was only for the three-year term until September of 24, 20.4?
I will say that was before my time, and so what I've had to do is go back and look for places where we have made adjustments, where we added those positions, and where that funding came from, to discover who those people were. So those positions weren't all necessarily funded in that way, but they were funded through ESER from the beginning, and we know that. And so one of the things, you know, we have done this, we eliminated ESER II, that evaporated last year, and so we've, we've built some of these processes already for dealing with and working with staff whose positions are shifting.
Yeah, the, is it, is it a possibility at all that with some of our ESER positions that we feel like we really need but can't afford, to hire them as contractors and skip the benefit part?
So it's still the revenue.
Well, it's, but it's only the salary revenue. It, and it's still, I mean, still, it's not the 15, the extra 15%. I mean, could we, could we salvage any positions that way?
We just first have to get, so now we're talking positions, we're ESER, so there's no, minus 10, but you've got to do that.
Yeah.
So then, you're specifically at the local body, because we built a budget last year with $4 million from fund balance, so you came in with a negative $4 million. So then you technically have to tie $4 million before you add on, because you have to go to zero to get it. So then, there's $2 million if the state took that, so then that puts it six, then we raises and benefits, which is like, so we put you basically at a $10 million benefit. So you've got to then, you've got to shave it all down first, be low to $1 million, and then you can, because you don't have any money. The $10 million is just to zero, so you'd have to get to a negative whatever before you can hire individuals for contract.
Do you think that's something that we could ever consider? You know, I mean, like, industry does it all the time.
Ms. Crable, I will add, IRS has very specific guidelines on contracted employees versus your, contracted services versus your employees. And so there are rules related to that, and so if the individuals were to come in and do exactly what they're currently doing, they would not qualify to be hired as contractors based on IRS regulations.
Well, I was getting, I was thinking in my mind, our tutors, or like if there's a special part of our program that we could hire people part-time, and then they wouldn't need benefits, not wouldn't, they wouldn't be entitled to benefits.
You mean state?
So, I mean, if we hire, I don't know if we really want to do that, but we could hire people as part-time versus full-time. I don't know if people would take those jobs or not without the benefits, if they could get the benefits elsewhere, but.
But part of a job is a job, but.
What, the projection, what we're considering is actually getting it down, getting to 10 and 10, because what we have to also think about is the addition for benefits, for benefit increases, the entire increase, the projected ways that's in there.
Yeah.
And that creates another cost of, that's why we have to step deeper to get to what they would actually get.
No, and I understand that part. I was just trying to figure out how we could salvage any, but.
I think to answer your question, and we may be going fairly far afield here, but one of the things, we're working with principals individually to try to increase their agility. So maybe I can have a full instructional coach, but maybe if they teach half the day, we can work with them to have part of the day out.
Right, that's, I guess.
So it's, it's doing a little more of this sort of thinking laterally into how to make sure we're making the most efficient use out of every employee. Is that, I hope that helps answer my question.
Okay, I'm going to circle back to the question I asked earlier, but with a little bit of a difference. So we're talking about this federal budget summary. Take ESER out of it. So the loss in federal funding is, first of all, directly related to the lower enrollment numbers strictly, or because grants end?
Well, these reductions that you're seeing here is actually based on guidance from, that we received from DPI. Even though we don't have federal planning numbers yet, DPI has said to plan on a 10 or 15 percent reduction based on, depending on the program. And so it could be, when we actually get planning allotments, it might come in higher than this, but we're just using guidance that we received from DPI at this point, just for planning purposes.
Okay. So the circle back question was, we got last time, position change summary, 279 positions, 70.5 were ESER-related. So that leaves about 208 cuts that are not ESER-related, which is not all enrollment, I don't think. Or is there any other explanation?
Yeah, so I, I, right. So some of it would be changes to allocations based on student enrollment, and then some of it would be where we projected revenue too high last year, and so we're having to adjust different positions based on that adjustment, where we use fund balance to cover it for this year. And then I would also say, maybe the best, going back to the positions, where we're going to list the different funding sources for all the positions, and also the department, number of positions by department. When you get that, I think you'll have a better picture of where those positions are coming from. And it could be some of those were related to these federal programs, but without having the detail, I don't know that. So I want to be able to bring that back to you.
Okay, I'll appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Bratt?
I'm going to circle back, I think, to what, to something similar to what Ms. Crable was asking, and I'm going to put it directly into our lives right now. We're getting a myriad of emails, and some of them say, you know, my child's, for example, speech coach has been, you know, is, is getting dropped, and they've taken another job. And, and, and so, you know, you're just like, I can't, I don't know how to help you here. But we're getting a lot of those emails, hundreds, literally, hundreds of them, of emails. And so, not saying that that's the one, but if it's listed here as not being funded, then that person, you said, Dr. Barnes, they already knew that they weren't being funded, right? They knew that it was a, it had titrated out, the money would run out, and they would be done, correct?
Like Ms. Sutton just said, the cause of some of these positions can't all be attributed to ESER. Some of them are reduction in enrollment, some of them are increasing costs, so it's hard to parse out that much. We are still working with our principals to serve every child, though. So that, I mean, if there's a specific question, obviously Ashley and I can try to answer that, but generally, sending them back to their principal, who are working with to find solutions for those questions.
Maybe I can help you a little bit. I'm going to ask Ashley to sum up what I'm going to say. Over the course of, from '21, '22, '23, '24, when we would vote on a budget and you would balance it using fund balance, I would sometimes tell you, it's going to take X amount of positions cuts to meet that need. So when we weren't hitting that number and cutting it, then you were having to balance the budget using fund balance. So fund balance was, again, your savings account. So when we weren't cutting those positions, and you give a raise, an internal raise, that has to be funded through fund balance. And so a raise, which we were sharing at that time, was a reoccurring expense. The reoccurring expense was not funded by the state, by the federal. We were having to use local funds to fund it. So there wasn't revenue that was generated, so we were increasing our expense, but did not have the student numbers that were coming in high enough. So our numbers on one side kept sliding down, and we kept increasing the amount. So my question to you, Ms. Sutton, would be, for how many years have we balanced the budget using fund balance?
So I actually.
And you may not know that one.
Yeah, so I actually got that question earlier. So I went back to our, if you go to our website and you go to the financial web page, and there's a budget section, you can click on the left-hand side, and if, once you get to that budget page, it has all of our budget documents going back, I think, to fiscal year 2019. And so going back all the way to fiscal year 2019, we were using fund balance to balance the budget. Now, it could be some of those years, we were not actually using all of the fund balance, but we were using fund balance to balance the budget, going all the way back to 2019.
So why, why would you use fund balance, why would we use the practice of using fund balance to balance?
So normally, and, because I haven't been here for all of those years, but normally, when you're using fund balance, that's because you get to a point where the board or staff don't feel comfortable making any additional reductions. And so in order to have a balanced budget, fund balance was used to be able to move forward and get a budget approved.
And so when you use fund balance, we understand that's a reoccurring expense. So if you use $2 million this year to balance it, you're going to have to use the $2 million again, or?
And probably more, honestly. So if you used $2 million to balance the budget last year, to balance the budget this year, you're probably going to, and you actually use the whole $2 million in your operations, then for this year, you would more than likely need to budget more than $2 million, because you have those same expenses plus raises and benefit increases, and inflation for utilities and other things like that.
Ms. Bratt? I've got a couple of questions, because we're talking personnel here, so I'm just going ahead and letting that out, I think. First, to address what you said and what Dr. Fow said, what year were we told by the commissioners to reduce our fund balance from $10 million, because we kept it $10 million? And there's no law, as I understand, that we'd have to do that, but we did, for whatever reason. So if we were told to, if we had to use the fund balance, was that before or after the, we were told to reduce it, to use those monies?
So what, that was you used the fund balance, or it was like the one-time expenses? But what we were having to use it for, because we weren't decreasing on the employee side, is we were using it for reoccurring expenses. So yes, it was $18 million, so we appropriated, I think, $10, or I think $8 or $10 million, I can't remember which one it was.
I think it was $8 in that budget that year.
$8 million. And then, so you had $10 million that was unappropriated. So then, that was there, but then when it got to a point where it's actually said, we weren't cutting, we didn't have the revenue, which were our students coming in, you have to then take that $8 million to get your budget to equal zero on both sides. So as they were telling us, they weren't necessarily saying, use it to increase raises. They were saying, we spend it, but you spend it on one-time occurrences, if it's an HVAC, if it's curriculum, something, those types of things, where it's that one-time cost for.
My last question, I'm confused. The last meeting, maybe the last two, the question was asked, I don't remember who asked it, did everyone who was hired with ESER funds, were they told that when the monies ended, that obviously the jobs would be on the block, so to speak? Those are my words. And now, I'm not sure that I heard you say that the same way I've heard it. And since we're going into personnel, that's something that I'd like to know, because, and I think you asked the first question, or maybe Crable asked, the two of you asked, but you, there was some uncertainty, I heard, in your answer, about who was hired with ESER funds, et cetera. And so to say that those who were hired with ESER funds knew they were going to lose those money, we would lose those money. ESER funds knew they were gonna lose those money, we would lose those monies, they would have to be first on the block to consider, I'm confused. So might help me.
So there is a list where it has social workers, I can't remember where, and I don't have that list in front of me, but there were, yeah, there's instructional coaches.
Social workers, there were some guidance positions, and some SEL that were part of that initial, when we first got those funds, they were actually hired into those positions. And so I think those were the ones we were talking about, the individuals that were actually hired into those positions, they received notification. However, I talked about briefly, when our state money wasn't coming in, and our student enrollment was declining, which impacted that revenue, there were some positions that we ended up moving to ESER because we had no other way to pay. So, in my mind, and Chris, you correct me if I'm wrong, there's really two different groups.
I guess my uncertainty may be, you're right, I was kinda saying, some of that was before my time, so I don't have that accurate information, but I know that we hired 10 extra counselors using our ESER fund. We said, "We hired 10 counselors." But we did that two years ago, and we've changed 30 counselors in that timeframe. So what I'm, you know, when I talk about using natural attrition, we need to lose 10 counseling positions, but it's not you, you, and you. It's, we have to come down on these number of positions by allotment, and then using that natural attrition so that we don't have to target one specific person who started here three years ago. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I appreciate that answer, but what bothers me, and I'm not sure there's an answer to this, is that when we do that, I'm sure we didn't notify Mr. Wildabore that his position was now ESER-funded. So if we, if you're still ESER-funded in this year, and we're redoing, and I lost the ESER funds, then your position may be in jeopardy. And it may be impossible to have done that, but I, I'm just bringing up what we're gonna have to deal with, because we're getting slammed, and this is the first time we've talked about personnel, which we're not supposed to talk about today.
I mean, I'll back up. We, we talk about this every year, and I'm not, I mean, it's not just a he or a tit-for-tat. We've known that we've had, needed to cut, and we have cut, but the problem was, when that was cut, and then there was also, or a person through natural attrition, the position would go away, but then it wasn't always a peg to, I mean, a circle to a square, if that makes any, makes sense. So, yes, we have cut, and we can show you cut, but then what happened, all of those ESER positions, ESER 1, all of those are gone, those people in those positions, they were gone. ESER 2, last year, all of those people are gone. The final is the ESER 3 individuals that are there. And what we are trying to do is, as individuals are retiring right now, you move them over. So yes, Mr. Wildabore may have come in as a counselor, but another counselor resigns or whatever, that now, that position code now belongs to him. He's no longer on ESER. So that's, it's, we understand how it works, but it's easy, it's harder to explain how. There's a system that goes into place, which is called a position code. And those position codes have to be there before you can hire, and before you, and some position codes are frozen right now, and so we've frozen those positions to ensure that no one goes into those positions. So that's how it comes in. We know that March is the, typically the month where you get retirements, because of how it works at the state. And so as those individual positions come in, that's where we will then go in and develop. Remember, I said, worst-case scenario, however, the ESER folks, those dollars have to go. It's no, that money is gone. And then, because of the revenue, and because of the projections for next year, we have to, we're forecasting how much it's gonna cost us. And so, that's why we are frozen everything, and we have created golden programs, and we're looking at going outside of the federal, in the federal, we have gone through programs. This dollar amount in federal is, remember, a 10 to 15 percent decrease. We have to hold that in the event that this, the feds go through with it. They're, our state, just through state word-of-mouth, districts are holding 10 or 15 percent. If that doesn't happen, remember, well, you probably don't know this, but federal dollars come in in the rear. So, that means that that money may not get here until October, November. We can't hire folks before then. In the past, we have done so. And what we were doing is paying them using fund balance. This time, we have to hold off and make sure that the money is there, so that we don't hire ahead of the time that the money gets there. It's a balancing act, and it's, and I always commend Ashley and her team for the work that they do, and everyone that puts in, because when you're doing a school budget, you don't have the luxury of saying, "July 1, your money's gonna be here, and I can create the budget based on July 1." Your money may not get here until late October, and then they may do a raise increase in November. And so, but we have to make sure that people are paid. And so that's why we have to cut, to ensure that, that revenue that is in this bill, in this organization, is available for payroll.
Ms. Barnhart, and then Ms. Walker.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. As, as we've discussed this in depth, I, I've, I mean, I've talked to many of you, just as far as the sustainability. And it seems like, because we get our funding through the ADM model and different resources, we have basically stabilized students, okay, plus or minus 50 students, and roughly 25,000 students. And how the state gives us money, they also give us money for raises. And so when we've reached kind of a plateau of students, roughly 25,000, we always fingers crossed to have more students, we get more money, fingers not uncrossed to, if we have less students, we're gonna decrease. But we've hit this plateau. And so the concern is, when we, when we have raises given, and we're given the same amount of money locally, this is what, and I know we're talking federal, but if we're given the same amount of money for students, and we have to give raises, what do we have to do with our staff? Naturally, we have to cut back on our staff in order to give the raises. And so I see that as a concern, because when you're talking about consistency for our students, and the staffing in our schools is important. And so I think one of the things, as we discuss this budget and talking with our county commissioners, while I understand the ADM model, and they have increased to 3434, that has been the highest, I think, for the last three years, that we've received substantial amount of increase. I think it's a conversation to be had with them, to understand that the state is gonna give this raise, period. 4 percent, 7 percent, I don't know what it is, depending on what it is. And so for them to plan better, too, to understand, if we're, if they're gonna give this raise, if we wanna see consistent staffing in our schools, which is what we're concerned about here at this table, I believe. If we wanna see consistent staffing in our schools, to have this allotment in their budget cycle to account for raises, and they can hold it until the state decides what it is and to give us that, but I think that's something that we, as a board, should come together and say, "Is this something we wanna lobby to our county commissioners in the funding model, so that we can try to maintain consistent staffing?" Because I believe that's gonna produce better results for our students. And that being said, looking back on using fund balance for years and years after year, when we gave raises to our staff back in 2022, one of the options projected was to cut 230 staff. And I have a hard time knowing, and there are board members who supported this, where we thought 230 staff cuts would be good to get from. And I'm really having the hardest time with that, because, and if anybody can help shed light of where they think 230 staff taking out of our schools is a good thing, I would really like to be enlightened on that.
I feel like we're talking about past years, when, if anybody's been paying attention, I know in '22, we had a salary study done that told us what our staff needed to live and work in this county. And we tried to allot, and still then, we were told, "If you give raises, we're gonna cut more people." So that didn't happen, so we cut less people, but we still had to cut. To the other point, our county commissioners give us money. Do we wish it was more? Yes. But obviously, if we were whittled down to the state allotment, we would have way, way less. So it's clear to me that state is not adequately funding what we need in this county, or probably any other county, but this one particularly. Where does it end? I mean, the fund balance that we, going back through the years, I know with the first year I got on the board, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Faust, like, we gave teacher supplements that year. And I felt like we had to match that with state fund balance money, because they had to, that's what they wanted to do. And I remember when the first, when I was sworn in that day, we were announcing that. But I felt like that was a match. So that, that was money that came down, that dwindled down the fund balance. But when does it stop? Like, I feel like we don't have any more money in the fund balance, so when next year rolls around and we have needs, where are we gonna get it from? Because the state's not giving it to us. So, I just feel like every year, that fund balance was dwindled down, because we had to grab out of it. But I don't think anybody on this board, going back, wanted to cut anything. I mean, that's the reason we had the salary study done in the first place. But even so, it's still not adequate. And the state, I think we need to have discussions with the state. Maybe legislative committee can do that, because they need to be in this discussion as well.
And I will say, I had this conversation with someone just today, you know, you look at, at where we are, and I think New Hanover County is in a very, very good place as far, not, not financially, but as far as our staffing. You know, we have, I remember when I was in Miller County, I won't mention one, but they actually had, well, I've been in the ring, I've been in the ring, come on now.
We know where you were, you can tell us all the time.
You know, for, for instance, we had a nurse, you know, half the day, or half the time. You know, we didn't have a full-time nurse. I mean, I think we do need to have full-time nurses in every school. Other staffing, like, social workers, we had one for all the elementary schools together, not one per school. So I think we are in a very, very good place. We just need to find a way, because I, I'm not, you know, you know, coming up with the idea of, of getting rid of nurses or social workers or anybody else. But I think it is, you know, we do have to look, and as Ms. Walker just said, I think, you know, it's a very, very important point, that if we went to the state funding, you know, allotment, thank you for the big word I can come up with, then, you know, we would, we would have a lot less than we have, a lot less than we have, or even a lot less than we would have with some of these cuts. So it is, it is important to, you know, and I'm not saying we should do that, but I'm saying we should, you know, be thankful for what we have, but I think we do need to roll up our sleeves and find any way we can to save these positions, because I think they are very, very important. Ma'am?
I'm just piggybacking on you yet again. If the state says we can only have this many teachers, if I remember correctly, the number is 788 positions are funded out of local money. And of those, 145 are teachers. But we're not getting enough from the state to, how to say, to staff our schools with what we currently have. So we had to dip into local money, and that's where the rub comes in, because we can't keep, Robin Peter to pay Paul, we can't keep doing it. But we, we like all these people. We like the level of services that we're providing, even though some people complain that it's not near enough. But we, we just don't have the money to pay for it. And, and we're, everyone's in a cycling down budget cycle, so we can't ask for more. I do think that we could go to the state and talk about the allotment. I do think that that's a place to go. It won't help for this year, it probably wouldn't help for next year, as slow as things work. But I do, I do wanna try to let them understand, if you've only allocated, you know, one nurse for, you know, five schools, I'm making that number up, you know, and we want one nurse in every school, you know, how do we, how do we meet in the middle somewhere?
Can you remind me, like, did the current allotment formula that we have from the state, how, when was the last time that was updated or changed?
Dr. Barnhart told us, 10 years.
10 years?
I've been doing this work for 10 years, and it's only gotten worse. They have not changed it at all.
And if I could say one more thing, I want us to remember that we need to uncouple positions. We want to save every position that we can, but HR is going to work to make sure that people have options and opportunities. That there's a difference between a position and using a person. That's what our work was last summer when we eliminated ESER 2, providing options.
Thank you. Ms. Crable?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. The, one is, do we have to apply for these federal dollars, or do we just get X amount of dollars based on our ADM for each of these categories?
So, how that works is, based on our ADM and our student populations, we are eligible for certain amounts, but we still have to submit applications, and those applications still have to get approved. They have to approve the plan of how we're gonna use the funding.
Okay. So, second, two things. The, kind of, you know, what, you know, Ms. Bradward said, and other people have said, is that some of this is beyond our control. And some of the decisions made in the past couple of years, we, we have to uncouple those from what we have to make now. So we can't afford amongst us to place blame on previous boards, you know, because we did what we did, and we, we saw that it's been a continuing pattern for many years. So it's not one board, or several on this board, that made bad choices, that we have to bear that burden and feel guilty about what happened there. So I want that to kind of go along with that uncoupling part. But the other thing that I think, as we're talking about helping our county commissioners know more about what we need, I listened to the county commissioners, I was at the meeting, actually, where they were talking their initial budgeting talks. And I don't know if any of you listened to that or not, but the 3434, you know, of course, came up. But they are trying something new this year, and are adding three new items to their list that will be attributed to us. Port City United Violence Interrupters, Community Violence Resource Contacts Violence Interrupters, the Elements Program that is run through the county and the police department, and the Too Good for Violence Program. And when you add those three programs up, they are purporting that they are giving us directly and indirectly 5208 per student. So that is something I think we need to have a conversation about, helping them understand that, that although those, those three programs are good for youth, they are not necessarily student-facing instructional costs that we should have to burden, I shouldn't say burden, burden's not the right word, that we should have to absorb in the amount they give us. I know they're very frustrated with the volume of emails that they're receiving, you know. For us, it's kind of like, you know, old hat. This, this is a, this is a big old hat, you know, we have never gotten this many, even with masks and returning to school, you know, we didn't, we didn't get that many. So I know that they're frustrated with that, but that it, but those three items, I think, might be, you know, behoove us to discuss with the people that we know, and just explain how they do not affect our instruction. So if they wanna give us 5208 per student, then we could use the extra dollars to better serve our schools, our schoolchildren. And the county can serve all of the youth with that. So, not to say that they're bad, it must, we might just wanna have a little conversation about that. And it's, it's to the tune of a couple million dollars. The, and I'm happy to share that slide with you, you know, I'm sure it's on their website now, from their meeting, but that was just a point I wanted to bring up, so that we kind of all knew, when, when we're lobbying, that we're lobbying, you know, for the right things.
Ms. Madam?
I guess I'll go ahead and make my suggestion. I was thinking about this when we get to the teachers, but I'd like to go ahead and throw it out there for the consideration of everyone seated, but particularly for the board, because we're the ones that are gonna have to approve the budget. My recommendation is, we will send our budget to keep all of our teachers, to the county commissioners, as we have it. And then they'll have to make a decision. And then, once they make a decision on what they will fund, I guess then it's up to us then to cut what's left. But I think that's the fairest way to do it. I just don't wanna sit down and for whatever explanation I've received, start cutting people. I just think that's the fairest...
But how do we balance our budget, Hugh?
By law, I can't do that.
Yeah, how, how do we balance the budget?
Well, it seems like we've played a lot of ways. We were told to spend down our fund balance. We, we also, the $9,000, which was an absolute phenomenal supplement that they gave, but we're picking that up with local positions. I mean, we're losing eight million for charter school students, and I would imagine if we go after the state, and as Pat said, some of us will be dead before they do it, but the dollars are gonna increase. For charter schools, they'll come back and ask for it, just like they did for those who're not even...
Hey, that's what I heard.
So, I mean, it's, it's going to, it's going to take them with a different pocket. I'm just saying, in all fairness, we, we just don't do away with positions. And we, and we present that, and then whatever we have left, and we'll have to, we will have a choice, but right now, we have a choice not to, to support our staff as is. And we all seem to agree, where we are, we don't want to back up. So, I'm willing to take that risk.
Well, I can't, I mean, by law.
But we can.
No, you can't.
We can say it.
Because my license are on it. And so, by law, there are certain things that have to take place. And I'm not sure, well, I, I mean, you, the law states that you have to create a budget, not the county commissioners. And so, we have to, the board has to vote on it.
But we submit it to the county commissioners, correct?
Well, I can't submit it knowing, going in knowing that it's not balanced.
Well, I shouldn't have told you.
Yeah.
Still a good idea.
Well, to, to Mr. McManus's point, can we not also do one that shows no cuts? And present, I mean, we're going to do one that's balanced according to what we have, but can we not present one with no cuts, just to let them know what we would prefer not to do? I don't see why we couldn't do that. I mean.
I love this discussion, and I'm, I'm kind of curious, when are, when are we coming together to hash out the operating side? Because I, I do, I want to see it, I want to see the balance, and I want to see, really, reevaluating, and just like I said with ESER funding, there might be some things that really were really great intervention things that we did. And then also for us to say, hey, can we still, just like Dr. Barnes was saying, can we still have an instructional coach, but they'd be teaching most of the day and maybe have a period or two that they're on the instructional coach side? Can we do some of these innovative things and absorb some staff and so essentially, but have the versatility versus just a single person being a sole thing? But I don't know when the next session is, but if you're on the books.
We don't, we don't have one.
I, I'm going to say, like I say, thinking outside the box, when in 2008, 2009, there was, you know, we had lead teachers, for instance, I'm not picking on lead teachers, we had lead teachers in central office, they were moved back into classrooms because of the need. And they were given an extra stipend and they were employed over the summer, you know, and, you know, that's, that's a hard road to hoe. I definitely, I lived with one that, that had to go through all those kind of situations. So, it was very, very difficult, but they were able to do that. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, maybe we should look at that, too. We have the, the best of the best teachers as our lead teachers in central office, and they, they're invaluable in, in that role. But maybe moving them back into classroom and then giving them an extra stipend to be able to do at least some of, you know, obviously, we couldn't get the same level of performance necessarily, but at least we would be able to give them, I mean, you know, in tough times, that's, that's what happened back in 2008, 2009. So, I mean, that's probably an option, too.
Before we move off of federal discussion, for folks who are listening at home, the, would you just, the $40 million loss, or not funds, could you just reiterate again about how much of that was due to ESER and about how much of that is due to our ATM? Because people are really concerned that now we are $60 million in the hole.
No, we're not.
And that's why I want, I want us to make a statement on that, so that we're clear on that. Could you?
And before she starts, the only thing that we have to be worried about is your local fund. Your, your federal fund is going to be federal dollars, it's going to be, like, you, you, there's no argument.
That's out of our control.
It is out of your.
All right, that's all that I wanted, yeah.
Your state dollars are out of your hand, like, the only budget that we can, that you fiscally can or responsible, you're fiscally responsible for all of them, the one that you are control, or we're controlling is local. I cannot take a budget that says we have no cuts. That's just impossible. It's, that's, we've done this for three years, folks. We've drugged this can down the road every single year. It, it just won't. Dr. Barnes used a term that says, that dog won't hunt. That dog's not going to hunt for you, folks. I get it, I understand what you're saying, but I, you can't have $20 million and say, I'm not going to cut. I don't know where, where would you get $20 million that's going to reoccur every single year? That's what you have to understand, that with no cuts, that means all your.
Essentially, we're asking for a $20 million increase.
Increase, and you have not even talked about the, the raises, the benefits. I, oh my gosh, that's all I'm going to say. If you want to quote me, it's OMG. Yeah, that, that's my, that's my quote.
And then Ms. Bass.
I need to go home.
I know, I was like, can I have, can Ashley answer my question about just the rough percentage on what that $40 million federal money that we're not, we're not responsible for?
So, I, sorry, I don't have the number in front of me. However, if you look at that detailed budget document, the ESER-related programs start on page eight. So, if you look at each of those programs and you add up that change column, you know, the subtotal for each one of those, that'll give you the ESER number. And then the programs before that are the non-ESER federal reductions. Now, remember, the non-ESER federal reductions, that is an estimated revenue. That revenue could possibly come in higher, but we're, we're reducing 10 to 15 percent based on guidance from DPI. I did want to circle back to a comment that you made, Ms. Grayville, about raises. And so, also, keep in mind, federal does not fund state raises. So, it's similar to county, and that's another reason you don't want to budget exactly what you think you're going to get for revenue in federal, because you got to make sure you have a little flexibility for raises and benefits, because you don't know at this point what that number's going to be. And so, you don't want to over-hire in those federal programs.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that clarification.
Yep.
All right. And so, this is not, when I say afford, I don't mean financially, but can we, as a school district, afford to cut ESER aside, over 200 positions in this district? That might be a rhetorical question. I don't think we can. I don't think we should, but obviously, like Dr. Faust said, he has to put a budget with cuts in it, and I understand that statement. But I'm just saying, can we, as a school district, afford 200 cuts? That's it.
Let's circle back. Remind us what's left in the fund balance, and then I have a question.
So, we, considering what was appropriated this year and assuming that we use all of that, of course, we hope we won't, that was the reason we put the hire and freeze in place, is to try to save, and so, we wouldn't use everything that was appropriated. But assuming everything is spent that was appropriated, we'll have about, I believe it was $1.3 million left in fund balance.
So, let me understand.
That would be available for use.
Yeah, so, let me understand, sort of what Dr. Faust said, but in my own little childish way. We've been borrowing out of the fund balance every year, for year after year, for year after year, to meet these needs, because we wanted to, to do right, we wanted to do good. But now, with 1.3 million left, we really can't borrow out of that fund balance anymore. We just flat can't. And we're already on the hook, if we have an emergency, we have to go to the county commissioners with their handout and say, hey, can you front us some money so that we can keep the, you know, the schools open while we wait for hurricane insurance refunds? So, we're, we're just, I guess it's, we're just finally up against a wall, and we have to realize we're up against the wall. And when you're up against the wall, you just have to, to do hard things. I think this, all seven of us are 100 percent in agreement, if they're forward-facing, teaching a child, we want to hold on to them, so we have to look at all the other things that we can cut. That's just my take on it.
Or, as I mentioned before, you know, one option is to, in my mind, my, my opinion is to, you know, to move people from, you know, from a non-student-facing position back into a student-facing position. You know, that's not going to cover anywhere near the amount of positions we need, but, I mean, that could be one option to, to at least help in that, in the overall picture.
Anything else?
I make a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Before we make that motion, can, can we set a date for when we're going to talk about the next round of budget talks, so that we can operate? I mean, I think we're done with capital in general.
We have to go to March, we have to be.
Yeah, okay, so like after the.
Meetings with principals and.
So, like mid-March-ish, or?
I would, we, can we get a calendar, get it out, some dates out to Ms. Bowie, and then send it out to.
Yeah, okay, so, let me rephrase. I don't need a date, a specific date.
Okay, okay, yes, but we will.
I'm looking at a general timeline, like, a couple of weeks, like, maybe end of March, or are we looking like two weeks-ish?
Well, and I'll just go back, I think previously, we had talked about initially, when we were looking at the budget calendar, maybe, like you're saying, mid to end of March. I don't know, well, I don't think we actually have a date in there, but we had had some discussions about, maybe towards the end of March, before agenda review, or maybe a work session on the day of agenda review, or something like that, were discussions, but whatever the board would like to do, we can.
I'll pull that back out, I forgot that you did that.
And like I said, I don't think there was actually a date, it may have just been March.
Why don't we, because I think this is a very, obviously, extremely important discussion. Dr. Faust, do you think maybe by the 19th, you would have that?
We would, if, give us till tomorrow.
Yeah, let us look and see.
Our calendar, because we have to plan it after meeting with.
Do you feel like we're going to be together tomorrow again?
Right.
Friday is in March, so that's good. We also, don't we also want to come back with the commissioners to have a joint meeting again? Because that has to happen. Because I feel, I feel like the more they understand, the more they might make decisions based on understanding. Because obviously, they have their job to do, we have ours. So, if we can have discussions, they might, it might help.
We have something that we need to share with you guys, and, and our agenda review, so we'll do that in the full session, about that kind of discussion. All right, we have a motion to adjourn from Ms. Barnhart, is there a second?
Second.
First and second in discussion, not all, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Carry 7-0, we are adjourned. Thank you, board members, I'll see you here tomorrow.